It's time for our work sessions. Madam Clerk, could you read the rolls?
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith. Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Simon.
Here.
Mr., uh, excuse me, Ms. Wilder and Mr. Feis.
Here. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as well as the approval of the minutes of the December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting as proposed.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Alright, we have a meeting. We have a quorum for a meeting and uh, the first item is in ordinance removing the term "at large" from the dog attacks. So that's what the...
Welcome to your first name.
So yes, please shoot the...
Sheila Stephan, Public Works Coordinator. Yes, we would just like to remove the term "at large" from that particular section of the ordinance. So, um, just kind of open it up. It was a request of Marty Peterson, City Attorney.
Because you have ward dogs, like ward one dogs, or what was it? Is it, was this the terminology has changed and it's time to...
It was too restrictive because at this point it says "dog at large." If we actually had a dog redeemed or turned over to us and we deemed that a dangerous dog, we didn't want to restrict ourselves. It was just at large. So... Does that help clarify? Are there any other questions?
Just some language change. Counsel? Anyone with any angst of removing the word "at large" from the dog ordinance? So we can't vote on it, but I think our silence speaks volumes.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Alright. Here we have five minutes. We can stay mundane to animal control, right? Or it's just...
Oh, we can get started with the next one.
You have guests coming?
I don't know. It's just counsel.
Oh, nobody's coming?
I don't, I don't think so, no.
Well, let's get started with our second item and that is the discussion of sidewalk cafes and the parklet ordinance.
Alright. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, so I've gone through with the help of Kelly, local businesses, Experience Waterloo, Main Street Packet that they sent us in the past, um, and adjusted this so that it was exactly what the businesses wanted. So there are two separate ordinances here, one for parklets and one for sidewalk cafes. I've already talked on, not you, but everybody else about it, but haven't had a chance to talk with you just yet unfortunately, but you can see it here now. So the changes primarily were to the duration of when you can have the parklets out. One of the biggest complaints from business owners was ten AM was far too early. So after speaking with Experience Waterloo, one of the big, just stick with what the state already says. So I've essentially changed all of that to two AM, uh, which is just to be in line with what the state already has present for rules for alcohol and rules for when this type of activity can occur outside. So that's all changed to two AM. The other thing that's changed, um, adjacency for sidewalk cafes to the actual building. Prior to the, uh, to this, they had to be adjacent to a building. We're now allowing it to be, so you have your building, you can have your sidewalk space for walking that must be five feet of, for ADA compliance. And then you can have your cafe there. The reason why is that way you can have that adjacent to a parklet if you choose to have a parklet. So for example, if Screaming Eagle has their sidewalk cafe here, um, off to the side, next to the sidewalk, they could have their parklet attached to it to have one continuous outdoor location for patrons. Other changes that were, are in here is previously we said parklets were only going to be for restaurants. I just didn't really see why that was necessary. So now anyone who has an alcohol license or is a restaurant can have this as well. Uh, so opening availability so more businesses can have this as an option. Let me see. If you want to pull it up, you can pull it up in our packets. Other things that have changed that were significant for timely filing. So we changed it so that your first filing can happen whenever. So if a new business comes in, they don't have to worry about, oh, I wasn't, I didn't have it by January. I have it, um, I can come in and get it done now. But we made it so that if you are renewing that filing for the next year, so let's say you do it this year, this coming year, and then in twenty-five you'd like it again, you need to have it in by that timely filing of February first. If you already, if already have experienced having one, it makes it more effective for us internally to have that date for those that already have one. And also makes it easier to get them out in a timely fashion once the summer starts. Other changes, uh, if you do not have a liquor license, that was a question. For example, there are some coffee shops, they don't have liquor license, they may want a parklet or a sidewalk cafe. They should not need a review by the police department because they don't have to worry about liquor. So remove that. If you don't have a liquor license, then you don't have to have a review from the department. Everything else is pretty much the same, the same requirements which were listed from other cities that have parklets. That they will request their permit through the clerk's office. The only thing that I had a significant question for counsel on is cost. Prior, previously I believe our cost was, Kelly, quote, let me know if I'm wrong, it was one hundred fifty? For both? Or one twenty-five or... It's in here.
It should show it in the code.
I thought it was two for each. So there's different costs. There's the costs for the initial, you know, check-in, then it's the cost for the license itself. And we need to cover our costs as city. I'm not sure what those costs are exactly, but that's, that's the only question that I have. Because if you have a business that doesn't need police, for example, do they need to pay the same cost? Should the cost just be lower in general? What should that cost be so that it's acceptable? They are utilizing our sidewalk and we are taking responsibility. They do have to have insurance obviously, but it's still on city property. So we need to charge for getting someone out there to look at that parklet to make sure that it's falling under code, that they're taking care of the property.
Yeah, parklets, there's a fifty dollar filing fee for the parklets and then that permit costs two hundred dollars. And then the sidewalk cafe, there's a fifty dollar filing fee. And then the fee is, you say a hundred dollars?
Hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars.
The one fifty plus.
And two fifty for the other.
Two fifty. So that's the, the one thing that I, I think we need to either discuss or we can talk about the change for the ordinance itself. If there's no opposition, I mean, when I brought this last time, there didn't seem to be any opposition to the idea of the ordinance. And as I've talked to everyone, it doesn't seem like there's any. But I'd still like to make sure that when we bring it back, it's, it has that final cost. I will be meeting with Main Street Experience Waterloo tomorrow to ask their opinion about cost. But other than that, that's really the conclusion of everything I have here for this.
Connect. So, so is it the same price? So for a place with a, a alcohol license, it's the same cost as a coffee shop?
Currently, it is. And that's what I wanted to bring to counsel. Do we want to change that to make that a cost that's different? They have less requirements, fewer, sorry, fewer requirements to go through than those that do have an alcohol license, but the cost is currently the same.
And then the second question I would have for you, um, you, this would be going against the recommendation from the police?
Yes.
To go to two o'clock versus, what was it, eleven or twelve?
Well, originally ten. And then it went to eleven. I do understand that it's going against the recommendation. I think allowing them to have a little more freedoms, may, you know, come with cost, freedoms come with cost sometimes, but I do think it's something that we should allow.
And if that's the case, for any challenges with this and police visits, would there be an, uh, extra cost for police to come back and forth?
I don't think it would change from anything that it is now. Um, and then we do, this is an ordinance, so we can, uh, if they have this, uh, we can retract it at any time if we find that a business is not following the standards that we've produced here.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
Just a couple of questions. And, and I, I understand the, the need, that the reasoning behind some of the, uh, business owners wanted to go to two o'clock. But like in, in the three hundred block of West Fourth Street, there's not a lot of residents above those businesses.
Correct.
And so I don't know what happens when we start getting complaints from the people that live in the, in the apartments above that, that we're trying to promote, you know, the, the, the commercial on the bottom, you know, residential up above, uh, what we're going to do about that. Uh, the other thing is, my question is, is, is who enforces all of these rules? When, when we, when we apply for a parklet and then we do the inspections? And then after the fact, who comes out and enforces it? Because if you have a food establishment, you can't smoke. Clearly states in here about the, um, parklets and the sidewalk cafes, even for the beer and liquor, you can't smoke. Whereas in the three hundred block of West Fourth Street, one of the business owners, thirty percent of his business is the outside. Because the people can't smoke inside the building, so they're going out to the, to the sidewalk cafe and smoking outside. And so both of these say you can't smoke in them. I understand that the, the reasoning behind non-smoking because it's a, it's because you serve food.
Right.
But I, I think that's gonna hit some resistance from the, the people that want a parklet or sidewalk cafe for, for just a liquor, beer and liquor establishment when that's why they're going outside.
Right. Don't really have an answer to that particular question. Uh, do you have a recommendation of what we could, I mean, who's enforcing, uh, the standards if it's really, I mean...
Well, I mean, who goes out if there's a complaint?
Police.
I mean, it's not Kelly's job to go out there, but, but who, 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 who would go out if there's a complaint about something that's, that's going on in a sidewalk cafe that, that doesn't, is, is outside the parameters of this ordinance?
It'd be the police currently.
But it's not a law enforcement issue.
So you're talking about for, um, someone's, an inspection quality issue, for example?
Yeah, because it requires lighting out there. If you, if you're serving alcohol out there and people are drinking out there, it requires someone from that establishment to be outside during, during that time. As opposed to, you know, they just come out periodically. I mean, there's just a lot of variables in here that, that, I don't know who, who would enforce something if, if someone made a complaint.
A lot of those things depend too on the nature of the complaint. So if there's, you know, if there's an issue with, um, a fire, a fire safety issue, you know, that might be the fire marshal.
Or water boils up.
Yeah, if there's, um, a structural issue, maybe that's the building department. If there's an issue with, um, uh, alcohol consumption on premise, then likely the police department.
So, so who?
It just kind of depends on the nature of the complaint.
Is there, is there just one, one place that they report it to?
The complaints come in from all kinds of different areas. Just kind of depends on what it is and who's being contacted first.
I do think the smoking is an issue, especially at places that, that strictly sell alcohol.
Could you, could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Well, it clearly states that in a sidewalk cafe, they can't smoke. But if you, but if you have a, a, a bar and you have a sidewalk cafe out front and people are going out there to smoke and, and to drink, no, they can't do that under this ordinance because there's no smoking. But if I drive, if I, if I go home tomorrow morning and I drive past the three hundred block of West Fifth Street, there's a sidewalk cafe out there that really doesn't even have the space for us, for people to walk through. And, you know, there'll be a dozen people out there smoking and drinking coffee. And that's it. That's pretty much every day when it's nice out, you know? So I just don't know who enforces something like that because that's, that's what our ordinance says.
Kelly, in the...
That makes sense.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying though.
In the resolution that we originally had for sidewalk cafes, did it mention smoking?
Yeah, I believe that's addressed and smoking is prohibited.
Yeah. So that's not a change.
No, I know it's not. It's just, it's just, I just, now that, now that we're redoing both of them, I just thought we needed, it should be something we should look at.
Remove that?
I'm saying remove it. I'm just saying we should look at it and come up with something.
I think it would be valuable to keep it. Just to be consistent with, um, I guess I would say the changes that had happened with the Iowa Smoke Free Air Act across, I mean, if we're gonna be, I think it'd be appropriate to be consistent with what our state has been a leader in. We can be consistent with, in our city with that.
Who enforces it? It's not a police issue.
If somebody were smoking in a restaurant, I guess, how would that would be enforced?
I don't know.
It would be enforced by the, the owners.
What are other cities that have parklets?
You?
Um, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
What are other cities like park, like this doing with parklets as far as the smoking is concerned?
It's in everyone's ordinance. This is, uh, a lot of this is from an ordinance from another city.
Okay.
So it's in the ordinance. I'm just not, I would assume, as Mayor said, it's gonna be the owner that enforces that.
Probably.
Yeah. I mean, it's the convenience of their own guests.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Relatively new to this, um, what is this replacing or what are we trying to improve by bringing this ordinance?
Sure, yeah. So, uh, there is currently not an ordinance for sidewalk cafes or for parklets. There's just a resolution. Resolutions are non-binding. They, they don't have any enforcement power. Um, sidewalk, uh, an ordinance is the actual law. So having the, the sidewalk cafe ordinance is simply turning that resolution into an ordinance that's enforceable. However, due to the changes, I made it, uh, broader, you know, allowing them to stay until two AM. And those changes make it better for the business. Uh, the parklet ordinance is brand new. So that is allowing businesses to use one of our, um, parallel parking stalls as a sort of floating boardwalk to increase their ability to have customers outside. So if a restaurant for, uh, give me the, trying to think of a...
Jameson's.
There we go, Jameson's wants to have their sidewalk cafe that they currently have. And then in the parking spot there, they want to have a boardwalk where they can have tables and chairs and lights and have people eat outside and have more space. That's what that's allowing. It's something that's very common in other major cities. I just came back from Alexandria, um, Virginia and took a bunch of pictures of even more, uh, parklets that are out there.
So I guess what I'm asking is what are, what are the people that own businesses doing currently? Like, like...
They don't have...
Mr. Bozen said he, what, drove downtown and seen people, um, and can predict where he's talking about.
Yeah.
Drinking coffee and, and smoking cigarettes. So is this going to replace something that's already on the books or do we just not enforce that now?
It's, it's a different, so it's not an ordinance yet. They're making it into an ordinance.
So the people that are doing that now, now we're gonna be taking that, that privilege away?
They can still do it. That, the, the resolution, the ordinance say the same thing when it, in regards to that.
But they're, they're smoking now.
Yes.
And they're not going to be able to smoke under this.
The, the revolution currently fit back.
Okay. I was just trying to clarify where we're at currently in the city at these businesses versus what they're gonna say after this is passed.
Yes.
Yeah, so the, so we've had, probably been talking about this for, what, nine months at least? To try to, to try to put some...
I apologize.
No, 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 you're fine. I, I was just gonna give a little bit of history on it. So having these conversations, one, uh, to make our downtown, uh, a little bit more, you, you can stay, you can eat outside, you can enjoy yourselves. And so it's been kind of scattered. We really haven't enforced it. You see some, some areas with the sidewalk cafes, uh, that are there. Uh, but how do we put some parameters around it so we can make sure that our, our sidewalks are more accessible on the city's end and make sure they're safe? But how can we put some parameters around it? And then the, the parklet, the parklet conversation is a little bit more of an expansion, right? We can sit outside and, and enjoy, enjoy the ambiance of eating outside or having a beverage of our, of our choice. And so we're just trying to figure out how we actually do this. And so we've had conversations where, uh, you know, police has said, okay, uh, we'll do ten and we said eleven and then now it's two. Then it's, should we pay? Some business owners don't want to pay, um, anything to do it because they're very much on the margins and they're doing it right now and they don't have to pay. And so we've just been trying to work back and forth between, uh, the city, as, uh, Councilman Bozen mentioned, what, you know, what are some things that are actually enforceable? Who's going to enforce it? How much are we going to charge? And this is that, we're making the sausage right now. You know, to try to figure out what's the best, best move forward. And I know, uh, the chief has not been, uh, not, uh, seen the two o'clock AM portion. But chief, um, best practices, uh, in the evening on pours. You want them to stop pouring at two, if, you know, they legally they can, but you gotta have that, the best to have that pretty much stopped by then. I know there's some best practices, uh, by the ABD.
Yeah, Joe Leibel, Police Chief. Um, there's a couple of things you want to be aware of is the Iowa Smoke Free Air Act is different for restaurants than it is for bars. So I think you need to make a clear distinction in the ordinance to separate the two. Otherwise, if you ban smoking, because a restaurant, it is banned, you can't smoke at Screaming Eagle and eat outside. But outside of a bar, if it doesn't serve food, it's okay. And if the ordinance bans it both ways, I think you're gonna have an issue with some of those bars that allow that. Um, the second thing, yeah, serving up until two in the morning outside, it's, it's problematic. We do encourage bars and most bars do. If those of you who are young enough to go out past midnight, um, may notice that bar clocks are ahead and they, I used to bartend, bar clocks are usually fifteen, twenty minutes ahead. So they stop serving, they get things cleared. I mean, the tables have got to be cleared. Everything's got to be gone by two AM. So allowing people to sit outside till two AM, smoking is okay, but with open drinks and open containers, as soon as it hits two oh one, they're in violation of the law. So that, that's dangerous and risky. Um, I don't know that you want to go up till two, but I mean, I, I'm open to that. It's, we'll enforce whatever you guys decide. But I think those are the two things you need to be aware of. The Smoke Free Air Act, we gotta comply with. So we need to distinguish the two and have some sort of separation there.
Do you enforce the smoking portion of it? So you get a nine one one call, uh, they're smoking outside, they're smoking outside. Are you, you're going to go to that?
Uh, we do enforce the Iowa Smoke Free Air Act. Uh, normally they ask us to enforce it at special events. For example, uh, things in Lincoln Park, when you have Friday Loo's and things like that, smoking is prohibited by the Iowa Smoke Free Air Act. And occasionally the state will ask us to ensure or monitor. Uh, they don't really, uh, push the citation part of it, but they want us to, uh, enforce the action and have people move their smoking to designated areas.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Chief Leibel, just a quick question because you originally recommended ten o'clock. And then we, they talked about eleven and now, now two. What was your reasoning behind ten o'clock?
Well, are you talking parklets or sidewalk cafes?
Either or.
Well, parklets, ten o'clock, it's getting kind of late. Most of bars, most of the restaurants are done serving food by then. So I didn't see a need. Now, after talking to some of the business owners, they do have the need and, and I'm open to that. Two AM is pushing it. I don't know. I mean, for the, for the parklets and for the restaurants. Sidewalk cafes is where you get into the, you know, they go till two, they serve till two. People stand out there and smoke anyway. We've all seen it. And they can do that. They can stand outside of a bar and smoke up until two in, two in the morning. It's whether you want them serving and sitting till two in the morning. Because like I said, the minute it hits two oh one, uh, the bar is in violation of the law.
Because we, on this, we do allow on this new ordinance, parklets and for bars too?
Yes.
So it'll, you know, it'll all fall under, I mean, parklet, whether it's food or bar, one's, one's smoke free, one doesn't have to be smoke free, correct?
Yeah, my understanding, unless the ordinance made them all smoke free.
Right.
But if you're just following the Iowa Smoke Free Air Act, my understanding would be a parklet for a bar would not have to be smoke free.
Gotcha. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Chief, one more question for you. So, uh, so it would behoove the business to, to conclude their pouring prior to two? Are you saying that changing it back, let's say, to one, what might be a, a better idea for the business owners so they're not at risk of being, uh, against state law?
Outside services is, if, if I ran a bar, outside service is problematic because you can't see it as much, if that makes sense? So if I go in and get two beers and go out and sit outside and smoke and now it's two oh five and I'm in here cleaning the bar up and I've never bothered to check, um, that person out there drinking is in violation and it's a violation to the actual liquor license.
Okay.
So it's, it is, it is better for the business in my personal opinion to at least monitor that and clear that. I mean, they need to, but you know, at two in the morning, you could stand out there and smoke cigarettes and a lot of people do. Why, they wait for their Uber rides or whatever. So it's really gonna be a, it's a tough line to tell.
Okay. Thank you.
And you, you need a chance to re, review.
Yeah, my apologies. I have not, uh, read the ordinance, but yes, I do, I would like to look through it. Yeah.
Counsel?
Thanks for all your work.
Continue working.
Thank you for listening. And, um, we'll, we'll keep working. Like I said before, I'll be meeting with Main Street and Experience Waterloo tomorrow to talk through any, uh, last details from the business side. And then I'll get back with everybody after I have that conversation. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Alright, uh, it is now time for the most exciting part of this, uh, discussion work session. It is led by Kelly Felkley.
Oh, I think the dog attacks is a lot more riveting. So what I have before you guys is a, just kind of a short ordinance change. Um, I'd like to take a different direction with how we keep our minutes. Currently under the city code, it dictates that our synopsis of everything that's said in the meeting be kept, um, or recorded into the minutes. I would like to switch so that we're in line with the statutory requirements for keeping minutes, which is, um, I gave you a copy of the Iowa code as well. Basically, the only thing that's required by law to be in the minutes is the date, the time, the place, the members present, how all of you vote, and then information sufficient to show how the vote was arrived at. So what that essentially means is any kind of, um, public comment doesn't necessarily have to be listed in the minutes. So I would like to move towards that where if we do receive public comments during the public comment section of the agenda or on an agenda item, just provide a listing of the individuals who spoke. If a business is coming, say we have a development agreement on, if a business comes and provides a presentation, that would still, I propose, be included in the minutes as well because some of that information is informing how you guys arrive at your, um, decision on how you vote. But the purpose of this is twofold. Number one, it'll help to save a little bit of money. When we publish our minutes, we pay by the word. And so our, when our minute, when our meetings get lengthy, the cost of that publication goes up. Um, and then the other purpose of it is to just save a little bit of time. Um, I have a, myself, I work on the minutes a little bit during the meeting and then I have an employee that goes through and, um, finishes the minutes and it's a time-consuming process. So I'd like to be able to free up a little bit of time each time we have a meeting for her. Um, what are your thoughts?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
As far as information for the public, it's always available on YouTube or, or our cable access channel to see the entire meeting and the discussion that was held.
Yeah, that's a very good point. Um, if somebody wants to find out what happens at the meeting, that's the best place to go because you're gonna get all the context, you're gonna see a lot more information. My minutes are really boring, Dave. I know you read them all the time.
Yes, I do.
But they're really boring and you don't get, you know, it, the purpose of them is to just record what business happens, not necessarily to get all of the, um, additional things that are provided during the meeting.
And, and when this originally minutes, Robert rules and all this stuff, there, there was no YouTube TV, there was no social media. There were no, uh, not a lot of ability to be able to watch, uh, city council meetings on television. So times have changed. So, um, counsel, other thoughts?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Well, I, I really like moving toward this. I like moving towards Des Moines' approach a lot as well to, uh, public comment in, in council meetings. We've had threats at council meetings. We've had some significant issues. And I want to make sure that we remain a positive and critical, uh, place here for people to speak. So I think this is a really good opportunity, uh, to move more towards that process. Uh, just, just, just my opinion. I'm not sure what anyone else on council believes about how we currently do, uh, our public comment. But this is something I wanted to bring up.
What do you mean, you won't go through the minutes and somebody calls me out my name again? You won't be able to search by? Okay. Alright, any other thoughts, counsel?
Will this all be brought, these changes be brought to us like at the next meeting?
Yep.
Good, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, if, if you do want to look at changes to public comment, I would think that needs to be a separate work session and have a little more discussion, but...
We should schedule one.
Okay.
Next, beginning of next month.
Next week, I don't care.
Well, I would probably say, um, you know, start gathering some thoughts about it. What your thoughts and what you would like to see and then we'll be able to do a work session. I know the... I know the next meeting is going to be a little bit logistically challenging. I think I'm doing minutes too next week, so that's really why.
No, I'll be here. I'll be on Zoom though. What I can do too is just kind of pull some examples from other communities and provide that to you in advance, and maybe try to do the work session in the first meeting in February.
While we're on the conversation of minutes, in 30 seconds, could you tell us what is required by law that we do?
For public comment?
Yeah.
This, the only legal requirement for taking public comment is during a public hearing. Otherwise, every other agenda item, we're not obligated to take public comment. It's just during that public hearing.
So, like, we do resolutions too, just because, I mean, we're doing two and three at the same time, so at least offer. But legally, we're person dated to only do public hearings?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, in the training that we, we are taking, Kelly, the MLA municipality training, they do suggest public comments. It increases integrity, accountability, and transparency. So, that was the best practice that was communicated to us during that initial training.
For public comments or comments on like hearings and?
They said public comments, so.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, we.
No, if they, they were distinguishing it, they were maybe, I don't know if they were thinking about public hearings or public comments, but they said public comments.
Which, which is definitely necessary. The question is, and we can move this to a further date, but the question is, hearing about, I don't know, swimming lessons. And we have hearings and all those things on the agenda. Is that the best use of that beginning? But definitely, public comments need to be heard. We legally mandate it to do it on some parts of the council meeting, but, all right.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll be back in a few minutes.